Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
All right, so we're going to move on to PC 7. And I don't have the clicker, but we'll move through it. So it's PDE 257818. This is for HCM Hospitality LLC. It's for a change in zoning from a C2 general commercial district and MF1 multiple family medium density district to an MF1 multiple family medium density district. The parcels are located on the east side of US 19, approximately 950 feet south of State Route 52, containing approximately 4.4 acres. The subject location consists of a hotel, which is La Vista Inn, and 36 multi-family units on the rear of the property. The applicant proposes to convert the hotel into dwelling units in conformance with the MF1 multiple family medium density standards for development. On August 10th, 2021, the court heard a case. In the court's judgment, there was a stipulated term of a great judgment between the county and HCM Hospitality, which is included in your agenda packet, which requires the applicant, among other things, to change the zoning and receive development approvals to use the rooms on the property for extended stays for guests. So on this item, it comes to you also with deed restrictions, which is on your agenda memo, item number two, that basically states that the applicant for itself and all subsequent owners, by acceptance of a deed restriction to any portion of the property, acknowledge and agree that the property is not eligible for the ad valorem tax exemption in 196.1978 Florida statutes. Also, I think that's the only deed restriction we have on that one. And... So as previously stated, this is formerly La Vista Inn. If you look at the zoning, so the eastern portion of the property is zoned MF1, and then the western portion of the property is zone C2, which is the hotel units. In the front, at one point in time, there was also, and it's been out of business for many years, but at one point in time, there was also a restaurant at the front, which was where the actual office for the hotel was located. The applicant has stated that they're not going to be using that. They're going to be using that to be like the leasing office for the apartments, but he can speak to that. Mr. Pressman is here to speak on that item. And I think I've talked to... It's not adjacent to any trails. There is a voluntarily agreed upon deed restriction, which I read into record a few seconds ago, and the recommendation is that the planning commission recommend approval to the Board of County Commissioners on this item.
Okay. Thank you, Denise.
You're welcome.
I guess before we start the public hearings, for those of you that are here, I should have done this at the beginning, but the public hearing procedures for the meeting, for the applicants, and for anybody wishing to speak on an item. If you signed up before the meeting, you'll be called when it's your time to speak. Applicants will be limited to five minutes, and other participants will be limited to three minutes unless additional time is approved, at least 24 hours in advance of the meeting. I don't think we had any of those. When you come up to speak, when you come to the podium, please make sure you acknowledge that you've been sworn and give your name and address, and obviously we'll know what item you're here to talk about. And once you get up there, your three or five-minute timer will start. So, that being said, applicant for this item? Mr. Pressman?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Board members. My name is Todd Pressman. I've been sworn. My location or office is 202nd Avenue South, number 451 in St. Petersburg. I believe that Denise has presented this, what is proposed before you, quite well. I would say to you that this is really an issue about affordable housing, and quite frankly, has become hurricane refuge issue as well. The major change here, as Denise has indicated, is that under the current zoning operation, the period of stay is 28 days. The purpose of the rezoning is primarily to allow it to have a period of stay beyond 28 days. I'm not aware of any opposition that has come in, nor anyone online. The applicants are here, as myself is, and we're happy to answer any questions or concerns you might have. Okay. Thank you.
Is it your plan to raise the apartment complex and build a new apartment complex or renovate this?
It will remain as is. It's just the use of the rooms will be allowed to be a longer term.
Are all of the rooms equipped with like kitchen and that kind of thing?
They will be required, of course, to meet the housing code for each unit.
Okay.
So I want to clarify, the statement you said, "remain as is." My understanding from staff is that you will need a new site plan approval and building permits, so you can't just remain as is.
Yeah, we'll have to meet, of course, we'll have to meet under site plan, we'll have to meet all requirements under code. If not, they'll have to come back for variances or for variations or waivers of whatever is required, certainly, yes, sir.
And these, will these be short-term rentals?
What was the question?
These be short-term rentals or rentals longer than seven months?
They will exceed 28 days.
They'll exceed 28 days?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So potentially short-term and long-term?
Yes, sir. Short-term...
To be clear, short-term is a defined term in our code.
Yeah.
That requires a special approval. I don't think, here...
What they're proposing does not mean that that's a short-term proposal.
Okay.
Is that... Hello, you got, John, for now?
For the moment.
Okay. Is there anybody here, or Todd, did you have anything else?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Is there anybody else here to speak on this item? Okay. That being said, anything else from up here?
So...
For Todd?
Question for the county attorney. There's this stipulated terms of agreed judgment. If we were not to rezone this property to MF1, would that put us in violation of that judgment, agreed judgment?
Can I please open, Ms. Rodriguez's card?
Assistant County Attorney Jessica Rodriguez for Pasco County. Pursuant to the agreement that was signed in 2021, they, only way they can use extended stays, more than 28 days, is if they go through this process. If they don't, they have to follow whatever Florida statute requires, which is 28 days or less.
Is the only process rezoning to MF1, or could they use the conditional use in C2 because they're in the West Market area?
That would have been a possibility, however, then they would have, then there would be half of the building or half of the property would be zoned to MF1, and then they would have a conditional use over the C2.
Right. But that would allow them to do what they want to do?
That's correct, yes.
And then we could apply conditions to the conditional use rather than just accept the Euclidean zoning district as is?
That is correct.
Would the applicant have an issue with that?
Can I ask you, repeat that, please?
So, in our land development code, in the C2 district, you can request a conditional use approval for multifamily, so long as, and I think there's three criteria for that. One is be located in the West Market area, which you meet that criteria. Would you have a problem accepting a conditional use rather than the Euclidean rezoning district?
We're here to move forward with the rezoning before you today.
So that's a no?
That's correct. We've been through the process. We're here, we have staff support. No one, frankly, is in opposition. We think it's a good way to proceed. Appreciate your consideration, thoughts, sir.
Okay.
Can I just... Commissioner Moody, if the concern is that you think there should be some conditions, there is a deed restriction that is going with this rezoning. So if there's something in particular you're concerned about, you could ask the applicant if they're willing to agree to some additional requirements in the deed restriction.
Well, that would probably be all of those terms of that agreed judgment. The problem that I have is this property appears to, historically, I don't know whether it is today, but historically, it's been a nuisance. It's been a big problem. And I'm not hearing a proposal to raise the facility and build a new affordable housing complex, which I might not be opposed to. And I'm concerned that all we'll do is create some low-budget efficiency apartments and continue to have the same historic problems on the property that we have, except now they can legally stay there for more than 28 days. Whereas if we did this as a conditional use, then we could, the benefit for the county of it being a conditional use is that if the applicant chooses not to manage the proposed apartment complex or affordable complex, whatever we're calling this, in accordance with good standards of practice, a conditional use can be revoked.
It can, but if there were similar requirements embedded in the deed restriction, we have other, we can enforce the deed restriction as well, so...
But is it quicker to revoke, to enforce a deed restriction or quicker to revoke a conditional use?
I'm not sure which is quicker. I mean, I'm asking Ms. Rodriguez to...
Which is the more efficient process.
I'm going to call Ms. Rodriguez back up, because I, my understanding, though, is that the applicant is currently in compliance with their judgment.
That's correct.
So, to the extent they were not in compliance, I guess the question would be, what would, what would be the, how would you enforce that if they didn't comply with the judgment?
We'd file a breach of contract.
Which would be similar, which you'd have to file for the deed restriction. I mean...
That's correct.
Similar rule was filed already.
Correct.
Couple of years ago.
To enforce the judgment.
Which would be a legal proceeding.
That's correct, within the Sixth Circuit.
Or as revocation of a zone of a conditional use would, I don't know if that comes back to the planning commission, but that's a board action.
That's a board action. Correct.
Yeah, I can't tell you which is faster or slower, they're just different processes. So, um, but, oh, my only point, I mean, yes, you in theory could deny the request and ask them to resubmit as a conditional use. The only point I was trying to make is if there was something in particular that you wanted to make sure was an enforceable requirement, we can enforce the deed restriction.
Can I, can I just interject quickly?
Go ahead.
Okay. So the agreement is going to stay in place regardless of whether it's zoned as a multifamily or if you do a conditional use. They're still required to do the terms of the agreement.
I, I understand that.
Or if the application's denied and it stays commercial, it still stays in place.
It still stays in place.
From a zoning perspective, it's been the policy since the Live Local Act was imposed upon us, or it's been our position here in Pasco County that we don't want to see our job-creating sites, our C2 sites, turned into apartment complexes.
Correct.
And affordable housing complexes. This seems to go against kind of the, the policy we've been pursuing. So, the reason that I suggest the conditional use is that still allows us to potentially preserve this in the future, because I look at the age of this facility. In fact, I can tell you, I lived here when this facility was built. I remember when it was brand-new.
Damn your old...
Yeah. So, so that concern is, it's a legitimate concern, and that would, that cannot be addressed with a deed restriction, because you would be changing the zoning.
Right.
So you, it's hard to unwind that, if that's the concern.
It seems to me a bit, a bit inconsistent, but yet there's still a way to allow the applicant to do that, and it seems to me that that process allows the county a little bit of extra security to make sure that what we're being told we're going to get is what we get.
I think that's fair, given the history of this case.
May I respond, Mr. Chairman? Yes. I would suggest to you that allowing it to move forward today would bring more stability to the site. As you've heard from the staff, the owners and managers have brought the site into compliance of those concerns and have continued to do so. Any of these issues, as you well know, is a long road to get here and get done, but I will add that this is a site that is a last resort of affordable housing and now hurricane refuge. And what's occurring in the county for these people, sort of a last refuge, is they will go somewhere for 28 days, then they have to leave, they go to another place, then they may come back, they hop, have to, unfortunately, it's a terrible way to live, but unfortunately, that's the way some people are having to address and live their lives. We're trying to make that better. We think this is a good example. You still have control over it. We've gone through a lot of hoops to be here today, and without any opposition from the public and support of your staff, we would very, very much appreciate your recommendation of support.
With all due respect, we've had lots of affordable housing developers in here that are building nice new complexes with recreation facilities and swimming pools and neighborhood parks.
With the greatest...
This is taking an old motel and turning it into a bunch of efficiency apartments. I'm not sure I call that affordable housing, and I think your application was filed long before there were any hurricanes.
So I was going to say, I think it's a little disingenuous by saying that, because this application was filed, you know, the hurricanes happened the last two weeks. I understand that's an issue now, potentially, but this, this, this wasn't to address a hurricane shelter issue.
No, it certainly was not. I mean, imply that my comments were in the fact that it has now become that because of circumstances. This was filed a long time ago.
So could I ask you another question?
But in regard to afford...
Okay. You keep saying that it's affordable housing, but there's actually no commitment anywhere in this application that this is going to be affordable housing. There's, it's just a rezoning to MF1. So have you, have you obtained any grants from our community development department to ensure this remains affordable? I mean, I, you keep making the statement over and over that it's affordable housing, but I see nothing in this application that commits it to be an affordable housing project.
We're happy to include any restriction to confirm that and hold that as a use on the site.
Well, I guess, well, let me just add to that. Okay, so one of the things I asked staff to include in this agenda memo was how much you'd, how much you'd have to be paying in impact fees to convert this use to residential. It's $1.4 million.
Yes, sir.
If it was an affordable project, why didn't you ask for some affordable housing reduction for your impact fees? We have, that is available, but you just let staff put $1.4 million in there and apparently you're happy to just pay that?
The conditions and restrictions, I sent over to the applicant and asked them to review those. Certainly, if there's ability to reduce those, we will pursue those.
Okay. But, so you just saw the $1.4 million and never said, your client just said that was okay, just to pay it?
I referred all the documents to the client and made sure that they reviewed them and make sure that they were comfortable with them. Yes, sir. Okay. Does anybody else up here?
I'm just not really clear whether this is an affordable housing project or not, but, but, okay.
Sounds like a sales pitch, to me.
I'm just saying that most affordable housing projects that are, that come into the county and they're seeking approval as an affordable housing project.
Yes, sir.
They try to take advantage of either grants or reductions of impact fees. They, there's a lot of things they do to make the project affordable. Typically, an affordable project wouldn't want to be paying $1.4 million in impact fees, because then they got to raise their rents, which probably makes it not affordable. So you're coming in here saying it's affordable, but you haven't done any of the steps to a normal affordable housing applicant would do to make sure it stays affordable.
The other thing, David, is I think when people move into an affordable housing complex, they sign a one-year lease, not a 28-day lease. This sounds like you want to have an extended-stay hotel, and I'm not necessarily opposed to that. If you want to build a brand-new extended-stay hotel, I might be on board with that. This area is blighted, could use some nice redevelopment. This doesn't sound like a redevelopment. Sounds like a conversion, a technical conversion, so that you can allow people to stay on the property longer than 28 days.
That, that is precisely it. This is a affordable housing of last resort, of single efficiencies, single efficiencies for people who can't afford a brand-new affordable housing complex with a pool and amenities and one, two, or three bedrooms. That's just the reality of how some people have a choice how they have to live, again as a last resort.
My question primarily to you is, if it was an affordable housing project, why didn't you go through our community development department, seek grants, seek impact fee reductions, which, as far as I know, every affordable housing project in the county that comes in as an affordable housing project does that?
What I...
Honestly, I reviewed this before it got here.
Yes, sir.
You getting up and telling me it was an affordable housing project was the first time I ever heard of it.
We present it as an affordable housing project by virtue of what is on the site and what the product is, which is a very small, I'm going to say again, last-resort product for people who are in dire straits, whose next step is probably homelessness. It provides housing for a group of people that are in dire circumstances. That's what's on this property.
Based on the history of the property, it doesn't sound like those are the people we want to be housing.
Well, those people need housing, and circumstances also arise, first of all, in people's lives, following through net of social support. And again, one example that we've had in the last several weeks are people losing their homes and needing a place to live immediately, at least for short-term or longer-term, over 28 days. These things happen. We're all very lucky that we can afford a nicer place and a higher-level place to live.
Acknowledge the need for affordable housing.
Excuse me, sir.
I acknowledge there's a need for affordable housing in the county.
Yes, sir.
My question to you is, how does your client plan to pay the $1.4 million in impact fees and still keep it at the, as affordable as what you're representing?
I can have them respond to that, but I will also tell you that as soon as we leave this meeting today, I will work with them to pursue those elements or pursue those possible areas of support.
That didn't occur to you when you saw the agenda memo and saw that it was that you need to owe $1.4 million in impact fees to do this conversion?
My easy answer is to you, I receive the staff reports, I review everything on zoning, send it to the client, and tell them to review it very closely and be sure they're comfortable, and double-check that they are.
I mean...
I mean, the financial element is...
Pressman, I mean, it sounds to me like if they're comfortable paying the $1.4 million, you need to go do some homework with them and do the, get some kind of reduction and have them put that money back into the place to, to upgrade the facilities.
Correct. Normally only makes sense for an affordable housing developer to get the margins that they need on that development by getting some of these grants and some of these, I guess, things that the county affords them to be able to receive for affordable housing, affordable housing credits and so forth. And if you're not taking advantage of that, I don't understand how the margins work.
What I would suggest, with all due respect, as your consideration, to consider moving this forward as a recommendation, and we will immediately, I immediately have the applicants work with the county to pursue those programs.
You know, I'm not sure that I'd want to give up the commercial development, but...
Will we, with all due respect?
...run out to make this a multifamily development. Like I said, if you were promising me a brand-new, shiny, brand-new multifamily development that was deed restricted for the next 30 years for affordable housing, I might look at that different. But there's no guarantee here. You come up and you make that claim today, and there's no guarantee that when you leave here tomorrow, that that's what we'll actually get. Is it really what's affordable or what we can, what we can get out of the people?
Right. I don't, I don't know how you reduce the end cost for the people that are living there without taking full advantage of all the credits that you can get through affordable housing. That's, that's...
So you made a statement that you're willing to make a commitment to be affordable. Are you talking about 60% of AMI, 80% of AMI, 120% of AMI? What affordable, affordability commitment are you saying?
As I understand it, it's a percentage of the area of the AMI, which I think last, well, and I, I know what that number is in Hillsborough and St. Pete, but it's the standard of affordable housing.
But you understand there's different, there's different tiers of affordability?
Say again, sir?
Different tiers of affordability?
Yes, sir.
So which tier are you committing to? If you're saying it's affordable housing, you should know what tier you're committing to.
I can ask the applicant and ask if they have an answer to that. Yes, sir, if you would like that.
I'm asking, you're the one here today, you are the applicant. I'm asking you, what, what tier are you committing to?
I'm a representative for the applicant. I can bring the applicant up to answer the question.
Oh, okay, they're here?
Yes.
Okay, well, let's bring them up then.
Just a reminder, we, we do need your name and address, and then we need you to acknowledge if you've been sworn.
My name is Yiran Patel, and I haven't been sworn.
Okay.
To speak over here.
You have not been sworn?
To speak.
Okay. So if you can, raise your right hand, and the clerk will swear you in.
You swear, affirm, the testimony you're about to give is the truth, so help you God.
Yes, I do. Okay, I'm sorry, what was the question?
So your representative has stated that you're willing to commit this is an affordable housing project. My question to you is, what tier of affordability are you committing to?
Okay, I am not aware of what the tiers are right now, but the reason we are doing this is we have a lot of workers who works around the area, and they are staying on the property, and it is so much inconvenience for them to move here and there. So we've been getting a lot of requests that if they can stay over 28 days.
Okay, so...
Because they are not finding...
What is, what is the monthly rent you're charging currently?
We, it, it depends if they are going to the apartments areas, it's a different pricing, and the regular rooms, we go to 50, to 300 a week.
So you're charging...
But as a hotel, you know, the other fees are also incurred of cleaning and everything.
So, and what about the apartment? What's the cost on the apartments, monthly?
It's 400 a week.
400, 1600 a month, roughly.
Yeah.
And you're comfortable with the $1.4 million of impact fees? It's...
No, sir, because we were not aware of these options that were just given, that how can, we are even eligible to get those, you know, reduced or anything. Because we were told it was going to be like over 50,000 or more, and it comes down to this, and we still looking for help, but we didn't know that these options is available to us.
So how will you fund rehab of the apart, of the motel units to apartments?
We're going to go through all the housing standards, sir. That's what we have done so far, that any housing...
He's asking, how, how can you fund that?
How can I fund that?
What's the source of funding to do that?
We, we have a potential partner who is willing to do that, who is already in the industry. He has done a multiple affordable housing in Orlando area, so they are willing to partner with us and help us guide through this process.
And is this going to be the same, would you turn each room into its own living unit? Or would you combine the rooms to become living units?
However the plan is going to come down to, and the housing standard that we have to meet, whatever, and the safety standard, whatever we have to meet, we're going to have a plan accordingly then. And the partner who is willing to partner with us, the company, they have a substantial experience in that, so they can guide us through this process. But our, as, as far as we go, we were the only concern about if we cannot change the zoning, he cannot partner with us. So that is the first step that we have to take, and that is why we are standing here in front of you.
Well, I offered another avenue to get where you want to go. Is that necessarily a problem with you?
I'm not sure that would, you know, will be closer to the potential investor that we have, partner that we have, can support his model or not. I'm not 100% sure about that, sir.
Well, I'm not, not understanding. You're looking for an entitlement, and we can give you that entitlement without changing the zoning. We can do that through the conditional use process.
An entitlement allows them to do exactly what you want to do.
But it also allows the county to retain the potential entitlement for commercial redevelopment, which is what I'd really like to see here on this property.
Denise, this goes to the BCC next week? Is that correct?
This goes to Board of County Commissioners. Yeah, it says 1022, but it's actually not, I don't believe it's on the agenda for 1022.
Okay.
When, when did you first team up with your redevelopment partner? Was it during this application process, or was it before?
Right before that, a few weeks... Right before that, a few weeks ago. I mean, we, we've been talking to him about a couple of months. So we looked at his projects and stuff, what he, he has done so far and it kind of interested us, you know, what he was offering. And that would solve our problem too. As I said, we have many people, they are willing to sign the petition that they can stay longer over there and I'm talking about families with the kids. We have a bus, a bus, a bus is coming over there, school buses, right? And people still have to move here and there every 28 days, which is very difficult for them. So it, it's going to solve both of the problems. We're going to have our steady cash stream that what is we are doing right now and it will solve the long-term problem for us and for them.
The reason I asked was because I would expect a redevelopment partner that's experienced in affordable housing to have thought about some of these credits and, um-
I think one of them that he thought about was denied to us, I think, before that. I'm not 100% sure because he's in the loop with this and we did email all this subject to him. So if he's open to any of those credit, he would let us know.
So the rear portion of the property is already zoned multifamily and that has apartment units on it that comply with the building code and all of that?
Yes, sir.
Are those 100% occupied?
We are, we are using that as a hotels because we have that supplemented agreement for 28 days.
But, so I'll ask the question of staff or county attorney, if they have legitimate apartment units located in the multifamily zoning district. There's nothing that stops them from making rentals longer than 28 days on that portion of the property? So then what's the need to rezone the front portion?
The only thing I can see though, just by looking at the aerials, it looks like that zoning cuts that back building in half. It looks like it goes right through the middle of that building.
Does it?
That's accurate. Yes, it, it cuts that building in half and they have presented to us that their new model is for extended stays, stays that are longer than what the state shows as transient lodging for hotels.
Basically, C2 allows hotels a use. It does not allow permanent or longer-term residential use.
Correct.
Unless they take advantage of the conditional use.
Conditional use or MF1, yes. You may, you may want to ask staff why they supported the MF1 route versus C2. I don't, they may have an opinion on the issue versus conditional use.
Correct, because we, our opinion was that that is the cleanest way to do this because then you would basically have a portion of the rear of a building that has some conditions under conditional use, where you have a portion of another building that is under MF1. So then the applicant would literally have to rezone the property to seat, go through two processes, rezone the property to C2 or that portion of the property that, maybe not the entire property because there, there's some kind of like low-lying areas in the back, but a, a specific area of the property to C2 and then do a conditional use over the entire parcel.
I mean, in theory, it would still accomplish the same thing though by having a conditional use on the front part of the parcel and leaving the MF portion alone, correct?
It would just not have the condition, it would not have any conditions.
On that rear portion, right, which it doesn't now.
Which it doesn't today.
That's correct.
It's nothing any different.
That, that is accurate.
Right. My particular issue is that if we use the conditional use process, it allows us to impose conditions, which we can't do under a Euclidean district.
That's a pretty heavy commercial corridor right there on the corner 52 and 19. I mean, it, C2 makes sense for that front portion. I, I agree with Mr.-
That's my thing. And I mean, we've been, we've been here continuing to, you know, beat the drum that we need to preserve our job-producing sites. You know, we've been defending the county against the Live Local Act here so that we can preserve those job-creating sites and then here we want to give it away as a matter of convenience for someone that has historically not been a good neighbor.
Well, the county has worked its hard work and the site is in compliance and the folks have responded, they fixed those issues. I, I think with the greatest respect, to keep stating that they've had a bad history, it's better to think that they have worked hard, worked with the county, obviously worked with the county attorney and settle these issues. I would also suggest with all-
By calling over to the sheriff's department, there's been no call since that stipulated judgment because I can tell you I passed this on my way home and I regularly see sheriff's deputies out in front of this place.
Well, I don't know why a car or two may be there, sir. Certainly I don't, but certainly bringing in a longer-term stay will bring more stability to the site.
Yeah, if it was one-year leases maybe, but. So what, what would be if the board was leaning that direction, not saying they are, but if they were leaning the direction of applying a conditional use to it as opposed to the rezoning? What would be the way forward from here? Would we have to make a denial on that current application or can we still move this forward today?
Maybe we need to ask that question of David, but I do want to clarify that the board hearing for this one, it, it is showing that it's 1022, but at, on 1022, we're asking for continuance to December 10th. Okay.
I, I would ask, I would ask Denise the same thing so I can have them immediately look at the affordable housing programs the county has.
Yeah, I mean, I think it would be difficult to move this forward as is because, I mean, there have been instances, for example, when somebody sought rezoning for a higher zoning district and we recommend approval of a lower zoning district, but in this case, it's a completely different application for conditional use. It's-
And you'd need time to draft conditions.
Yeah, I, I don't, it's a different standard to review. I, I don't, I don't think you could proceed with this current application if you wanted to go to conditional use or have to be some, at a minimum, it would have to be re-advertized as a conditional use application. I'm not saying staff needs to charge them a new application fee or anything like that. That would be up to staff. I couldn't put words in Denise's mouth, but at a minimum, it would need to be re-advertized as a conditional use.
And then, Mr. Goldstein, you would be suggesting we come back to this board?
If that was the case, I guess it would come back to us.
Yeah, I, I don't think, I don't think it'd be appropriate for the board to be acting on something that, basically a new application that never went to the planning commission. So yes, it would come back to. I think staff would, maybe put aside the issue of the fees because I'll, Denise tackled that issue. But effectively, it would have to be re-noticed, a new agenda memo, treated as effectively a new application.
It would have to view the conditions anyway, so.
Yeah, you would need, Liam would have to write this up as basically a different application and it would have to be re-noticed.
Or make a recommendation filing and we'll move it forward to Board of County Commissioners. I think there was a lot of good points made up here and it's, um, this is valid. I mean, the point of the-
There is a third option, which is that you could continue it and see if they can come up with deed restrictions that would address your concern, but I'm not sure they're going to address Mr. Wood's underlying concern about losing the C2.
Right.
It might be able to address things like affordability, you know.
Like I said, I, I think, I'd feel differently. If you were coming in here and you were proposing to bulldoze this place and build me a bright, shiny, new complex, this is something that was built in the late 1970s or early 80s. It's way past its prime. We're coming in here, we're going to do, I don't want to, I don't want to accuse you of doing a bad rehab job. I haven't seen rehab plans here, but I'm not guessing that I'm going to get something that looks bright, shiny and new when you get your ability to do extended stay. This is an area that's blighted. It needs new redevelopment and I would like to preserve that job-creating opportunity in this area, but I'm still offering you a way to do what you need to do. Or at least I've thrown that out there. I'm not offering anything. Nobody's made a motion, so.
Yeah, I, I tend to agree with you. You know, we, that's an area that we keep talking about wanting to re, we need redevelopment in the western cor, western corridor and it's, we're not going to do that by doing things like this, I don't think. So that's, that's my issue as well.
You think for going over there? Chris, Chris?
I just don't see how, I mean, with the impact fees the way they currently are. I mean, this is truly an affordable project. I mean, it's just, it doesn't pencil out. I mean, there's no way it's going to pencil out, so. I think there's a lot of considerations the application needs, the applicant needs to, needs to think about. I don't know, the two months going in front of the board gives them that.
We, we have chair, we have charitable organizations that send people to this location. I'm trying to impress upon the board what this site serves for.
But this is, this is the first time that either the county's attorney or staff is hearing that this is a, as you're selling it an affordable housing project.
I mean, I guess that's, that's what's really concerning to me is that it doesn't appear you made any step to go through our community development department to ensure this was treated as an affordable housing project.
I, I understand your point.
And the rent city's charging in the back, I'm not even sure if they qualify as affordable or not. Okay, so.
I mean, those were close to market rates at 400 a week.
So you're throwing around this term, but that's, that term has meaning to the county?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and the level of commitment you're going to make on affordability would is important if it's going to be treated as an affordable housing project, which you haven't, it sounds like you have a partner that's used to doing that, maybe, but it didn't sound like either one of you did anything to move that.
Well, of course, of course, we came forward with the existing site and its obvious, obvious marketability. So that's what we did come forward with. I understand your concerns, Mr. Goldstein.
It just seemed like this, this whole application was born out of an enforcement action, not out of a desire to create a true affordable housing project.
I, with respect, I, as my understanding dealing with the applicants is they were working towards those solutions and then this was a different direction for them to go, which they felt would be more stable. And I think there's merit to that and there's merit to what's on the site and what they're providing to this community. I well understand your points, Mr. Goldstein, and I wish I could go back in time and say, hey, go talk to the county and get this affordable in place. Quite frankly, I don't personally represent a lot of affordable. So I'm not terribly familiar with it.
Part of the reason I asked staff to put in the impact fees in there because I actually expected that when that got put into the memo, that you all might wake up and say, wait, maybe I can't pay these $1.4 million. Maybe I need to do something.
Mr. Goldstein, you made that point quite clear.
But instead, all we got was just the application moving forward.
I'd like to make a motion. I, I move, I move we deny this application based on reasons five, eight, and 10 on the rezoning attachment.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries for denial. We do appreciate your time and consideration. We will, we will move forward and try and do our best to answer the questions, concerns of the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that puts us at APC 13.
So. Do you want to hear a full presentation, Chris, or you just have a question?
No, I do not. I just, I just had a comment. I know this was, came through as a comp plan. I voted against it then. I wasn't comfortable. I'm still not comfortable, but that's okay. I just wanted to mention that.
Would you, I remember the case too and there was some discussion over whether this would be five-acre lots or 10-acre lots and-
They're five-acre lots.
Yeah, they're planning five-acre lots.
And were you, was it your position that they more ought to be 10-acre lots or?
I mean, there's nothing, five acres right around there. And so I'm, I'm just not comfortable plucking five-acre lots in the middle of everything else that's out there. Everything else is 10, 20.
Understood.
Okay.
And as, um, as Mr. Williams correctly stated, it did come in for a complaint amendment and the Board of County Commissioners did approve that complaint amendment on June 4th from AG, which is 10-acre lots, to AGR. And that's, so this is the accompanying zoning for the property. Not sure if you want to hear from the applicant, but what is being proposed is 18 five-acre lots on the property.
I did have one question. It mentioned being the rural transition or something like that.
The rural transition area.
Okay.
Yeah.
And what's the long-term plan for that?
Does someone from Planning Services want to talk about the long-term plan for the rural transition area?
Victorios Pito's Planning Development Economic. The rural transition area is to, it is what the title says. It transitions from the suburban nature of the county that exists to the west and south into the northeast rural part of the county. So without a map, I'll generally describe it. The rural transition area comes almost to US 41 on the west end. It doesn't quite hit 41. And then it comes to the south along State Route 52. And then it goes east all the way to about Bellamy Brothers. And maybe it drags a little bit as it borders that right of way. But all of that is to be transitional land use. In other words, there are some development types that can enter into the transition area to be close to suburban densities. We've traditionally read that and understood that to be densities anywhere between one and two or so dwelling units per gross acre. Because the suburban density would be res 3 and the highest or most dense rural density would be res 1, according to the comp plan today. So the, the balance is between one and three at that point. So the rural transition area is intended to have this sort of up to two dwelling unit or so density per acre.
The, the subject property is kind of on that border between rural and the rural transition. It's closer to that border as opposed to-
Isn't Bellamy Brothers the, the divide?
Yeah, there's a divide there between rural transition.
This is the, yeah.
So this would not be the, this was not the first property or location within the rural transition area that had the, was it the AGR classification? Yeah, the AGR classification, rural, future lands classification applied to it. There are other areas within the rural transition area that have both AG and AGR and they, and they are compatible with the rural transition area.
Okay. Thank you, Terry. Cindy, do you want to?
I'm the applicant. May I say a few words?
Correct, yes.
Good afternoon, Cindy Terrapani. Terrapani Planning Strategies. I'm located at 128 East Tarpon Avenue in Tarpon Springs, Florida. I am the authorized representative for Sandra Ben, who is the property owner of this site. And you all are all correct. The plan amendment did go through this board, I believe, we were here in March. And then it went to the Board of County Commissioners for final approval in June of this year. And some of these same issues were discussed both at your hearing and at the board hearing. And what they, what the board determined was that, as Mr. Pito stated, that AGR and AG, the five-acre lot and the 10-acre lot districts or plan categories, were both appropriate in the rural transition area. We believe they are too. And the plan amendment was approved for five-acre lots. This is a 92-acre site. It has very little wetlands, about six, six tenths of an acre in two different pieces. So really not any major environmental issues. And 92 acres and five-acre lots, if approved, would result in a maximum of 18 lots, but we, we intend to go through the rural, minor rural subdivision process and that limits it to 16 lots. So that's the absolute maximum that we, we could by comp plan do 18. We don't intend to do that. We intend to do the maximum of 16 lots and there are two houses on the property today. So it's really only a net increase of 14 lots and we could have done nine under the old, under the old plan category. So we think it's a reasonable request. With regard to the various lot sizes in that rural transition area, there are a wide variety. Maybe not immediately adjacent, but there is a pretty wide variety of lot sizes. I think the most important thing that will tell you that there was, that the rural area folks didn't have a problem with is there were people there at the board hearing. I think some of them might have come to your hearing. I won't swear to that, but for sure at the board hearing, there were people from the northeast rural area there, some of the activists that have come to all the hearings and they did not object to this case. So I think that tells you something about it. We also did a wildlife study. We think that there may be gopher tortoises there, but no other listed species, so it's not a major environmental site. I think I'll just stop there and see if I can answer any more of your questions. We do appreciate your time today.
Just one question, which is, since we just heard a case where the applicant apparently didn't read all the findings. Just want to make sure that you're aware that finding 14 requires you to improve Johnston Road to county standards and your client's willing to do that?
And we're not intending to take access on Johnston Road. We're not intending to take access on Johnston Road. We already have an access that was approved by the county to Bellamy Brothers, and it, site has been approved with that access driveway, and a driveway that goes all the way through the property that's already been approved for the site.
Well, if that's the case, then, okay, I'm just reading the findings, and Denise, finding three says their access is also to Johnston Road, so.
Yeah, I think there might be some misunderstanding. East of Bellamy Brothers, Johnston Road is a real road. West of Bellamy Brothers, which is where this site is, on the west side of Bellamy, Johnson is, there is no right of way for Johnston Road. So we will not, we don't touch Johnston Road where our site is located, because Johnston Road only exists with right of way east of Bellamy, which we don't touch that. So I think there might have been a misunderstanding. I didn't, to tell you the truth, with all the craziness of these storms, I didn't catch that either, Mr. Goldstein, but I don't, I think we need to straighten that out.
Nobody reads agenda memos anymore.
Sorry?
It's not the only one that reads them. So Denise, if that's accurate, and I have no idea if it is, then obviously finding three and finding.
14.
14 would need to be changed, because finding three says they're accessing Johnston Road, and finding 14 says they need to improve Johnston Road to county standards, so.
I don't know if any of our transportation planners wants to speak to that, but that is accurate. If they're not going to be accessing Johnston Road, but we should probably have something stating that they're not going to be accessing Johnston Road, because Johnston Road is being shown through that property.
I mean, if it doesn't have right of way, that makes sense.
Well, I don't even know how this language, I'm assuming Liam deferred to our transportation folks when he came up with this.
That's accurate, yes.
Language, so.
And is there any need for like a secondary or emergency access?
It's only, at most it'd be 18 lots if we totally maxed out at five units, five
acre lots, but we intend to do most 16 lots, so I don't believe you, it triggers the need for a second.
It does not trigger secondary.
Okay. What about interconnect requirements for the lot sizes? I assume not.
Well, if it's an actual road, maybe, but what I'm hearing, the applicant says it's not an actual road.
East of Bellamy it is, west of Bellamy it is, it is really not. I think, I need to double check this, but I believe there might be an easement only across Johnson west of Bellamy to other properties, but I'm 99% sure there's no right of way.
Can you pull it up on Mapper?
And regardless, we don't intend to access it anyway, so.
Again, we should have transportation staff that can speak to that, because it is showing on Mapper that that is a road west of Bellamy.
Doesn't mean it's accurate, but it's showing.
Correct.
Somebody online, Essen or Stacy, somebody want to speak to that?
Yeah, but when we do substandard road, go ahead.
Go ahead, Stacy.
Oh, so I'm looking at Pasco Mapper, and I'm also looking at the seller records up, and the transportation planner that reviewed this listed it as exempt. So looking at that is telling me that the access would be from Bellamy Brothers Boulevard. Johnston Road is showing up as a private road, and typically when we're reviewing these, we tend to access our collector's, arterial, or local roadways. Thank you.
Yeah, I should have mentioned that. We do have an exemption both to timing and phasing and to substandard road analysis approved by the county.
Yeah, well, that's why it's confusing, because finding 14 says that it's not exempt.
And again, I only got power back recently, just like everybody else, so I have to say, I missed it too. I apologize.
We'll sort of let you off the hook, maybe.
So we will look into finding 14, and, but this was based on the information we received from our transportation staff.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions I can answer for you?
Someone up here?
So if we approve, do we approve as is with that?
I mean, you could approve it with the modification to finding three and 14, if that's your desire. I mean, I, from what our transportation person said on WebEx, it sounds like it was supposed to be exempt. Not sure how they said it's exempt, or then our agenda memo says it's not exempt, but it is what it is.
Can't you just remove the Ann Johnston Road portion from finding a fact three?
Well, you also have to move, remove the second part of.
Right, but I mean, take one at a time. You take three and just strike through the end.
Yes.
And then 14.
You could strike everything after the first sentence to 14.
Yeah, so on item three, just for the record, it would, after it states, Bellamy Brothers Boulevard, county maintained arterial road with approximately 50 feet of right of way. It would end there, so period, the rest of it would be removed. And then on item 14, it would end at, when the parent says SSRA or RRA 2024 00183, period, the remainder would be stricken.
Okay. Yes. Okay.
I would move approval of that with the edits that Ms. Hernandez just mentioned.
I will second.
Okay, motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed?
Nay.
Thank you very much.
Motion carries. Thank you.
So the final item is APC 14.
Good afternoon. Amy Toll with Planning Development Economic Growth. Today you'll be hearing a proposed small-scale comprehensive plan amendment in the name of CPAS 2407 Little Road Plan Amendment. So as stated, the proposal is a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment. The applicant's proposing a future land use change from res 1, residential 1 dwelling unit per gross acre to calm commercial, to allow, or on 3.12 acres, to allow for commercial development. There is also a proposed voluntary deed restriction on this site as well. It is located at the northeast corner of the intersection of Jasmine Boulevard and Little Road. So as stated, there is a proposed voluntary deed restriction. The voluntary deed restriction will include the language to ensure that the commercial site would be utilized for commercial development or commercial uses only, and not for residential uses in accordance with the live local. Additionally, there are prohibited uses that will be included in the voluntary deed restriction. As you can see on the screen, I can go through them. The proposed uses are standalone car washes, cabinet and cabentry shops, pre-owned vehicle sales or leasing, self-storage facilities, standalone warehousing and general storage separate from that required by individual businesses, and including sales in office, auto repair garages, lumber yards, standalone lawnmower sales and repairs, mortuaries or funeral homes, crematories, standalone outdoor pottery and statue sales, or statue sales, propane sales, septic tank sales, and installation businesses. However, propane sales are allowed as a secondary use, sod sales, shooting and archery ranges, freestanding recreational vehicles, automotive towing and connective storage of vehicles, and gas stations. These voluntary deed restrictions, as of September 10th, were acknowledged by the applicant and agreed to. However, on September 30th, the applicant has requested to remove the gas stations from this prohibited use. List Planning Development Economic Growth is not in support of removing gas stations from this site or from the voluntary deed restriction on this site. So given that information, there may be a potential alternative recommendation at the end of the presentation. So, subject site is located in the Embassy District of the West Market area and within the Urban Service area. Here is the context map showing the subject site. As you can see, it's located at the intersection of Jasmine Boulevard and Little Road. There is office development to the south, the neighborhood commercial use to the west, and surrounding low density to the east with higher density to the west. There's also Fox Hollow Elementary in the general location. So for purposes of depicting the gas station component, we did provide a context map to identify all of the existing gas stations in a five-mile radius. So as you can see, the nearest gas station is to the south, which is about a mile and a half away. There's one, two, three, four, five gas stations. South of that, to the nearest intersection, to the north, you have about four gas stations in proximity within 1.7 to 2.1 miles within this subject site. So I'll give you a moment to take a look. This is the aerial. Did I need to go back?
No, I just have a question, but I'll wait for you to go ahead. Sorry.
So that was the aerial. This is going to be your existing transportation network. Again, Jasmine Boulevard, Little Road intersection. There is the Little Road Trail that is located along that site, or located along this segment. Here's the visual representation of the existing res 1 flu. Here's what the proposed future land use to calm would look like. The subject site, I think this is very important to also highlight, it is currently zoned PO2, which is your office or higher intensity office development zone district. So, given the recommendation from Planning Development Economic Growth, with our proposal, we would highlight that it would be consistent with the following policies within the comprehensive plan. And we would recommend that the local planning agency find the proposed amendment consistent with the comprehensive plan, subject to the voluntary deed restriction prohibiting the incompatible uses. However, alternatively, the PDE action would be to find the proposed amendment inconsistent with the comprehensive plan, should the allowable uses on the site include a gas station.
So what would be, well, for two years, I've been sitting up here beating this horse, and I knew this day would come, when the voluntary deed restriction was no longer voluntary. And now we've got it in writing. So what part of the comp plan are they violating by not agreeing to voluntarily deed restrict a gas station? And I'm going to say right now, I'm not in favor of putting a gas station on this site, but I want to know what part of the comp plan are they violating, would they be in violation of by proposing a gas station here in a C2 zoning district, if, I assume that's what they'd be going for if we were to change the land use here?
So it's actually more about the future land use in this scenario. So commercial would allow for that full range of general commercial uses. So in the analysis, you take into consideration the character of the surrounding area, existing uses within a certain distance. So it's essentially, the policy that we're highlighting is 1.10.1, which is your generalized compatibility policy, but however, it's more so goal 1.10. And so 1.10 essentially says, evaluate your land use, evaluate your economic impact, evaluate the compatibility of the surrounding area accessibility, those types of components. And so given, given the research that staff has conducted on this site.
Then why not C1?
Well, that was the question I was going to ask, because.
I beat you to it.
Well, part of the reason, I understand why you're annoyed about the voluntary deed restriction, but the only reason that's an issue is because they're seeking C2 and not C1.
Sure.
Because if they were seeking C1, many of these uses may not be allowed anyway.
I'm not going to disagree, and I will tell you that if they come back here with C2, I won't be voting yea, but.
So I guess I'm just going to ask staff, why, instead of sort of planning by admission or by deletion, why not just affirmatively say, we only recommend approval of C1?
Was there a use in C2 that?
Because they're both compatible with calm, right?
So, yes, they are both compatible with calm. However, the original proposal prior to the application's submittal was for a contractor's office. So the existing zoning district is an office zoning district, but it does not permit a contractor's office. C2 permits a contractor's office. So that's how the initial conversation came to be. They were proposing a contractor's office. We said, okay, we'll consider amending to calm to allow for rezoning to C2, to give you the contractor's office. However, given that information, taken into context of the surrounding area and the sensitivity of site design, we would recommend to align other uses in the zoning district with the character of the area and restrict uses that would not be conducive to that. So that's how it initially started.
Could a contractor's office be a special exception in a C1? I know that would be two processes.
No, I don't think it is at all.
It can't be.
It is not.
No.
And are there any other contractor's offices in that section of Little Road?
Good question. I'm not sure.
I drive it every, well, I was going to say I drive it every day. It depends which way I go home, sometimes 19, sometimes Little Road, but, and I've lived there almost my entire life. No, there aren't any.
Sure. So that was the initial discussion, kind of snowballed into why we're here now.
So I do have one other additional question, which is, the language you have in the agenda memo, I'm assuming that's not the actual language of the deed restriction. The reason I'm asking is because your live local language is not what we normally use. So is that going to be converted to our actual live local deed restriction? Because I don't, it almost looks like it was intentionally written a different way. So that's what I'm asking.
Yeah. So that language was recommended by our county attorney's office, but yes, we would convert it for the deed restriction.
Okay. So the actual deed restriction is not going with this plan amendment?
Correct.
It would be going with the future rezoning.
Correct.
If it's going with the future rezoning, Liam is fully aware about a right to that condition, so that answers my question, at least that part of my question.
Do we have any other questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is the applicant present?
I'm afraid you're stuck with me again today. Thank you for your attention. Cindy Terrapani, 128.
By the way, clearly you did read this one.
This one I did.
Down the gas.
Power came back on.
Well, you know what happened with these two agenda items? They came on late, for whatever reason, through the county system, so it was a little bit of a scramble at the end, I will tell you, for all of us, not just me, but for the county staff too. Cindy Terrapani, I'm here on behalf of the applicant, applicant who is also the property owner, Castang LLC, and I have been sworn in. I do have an exhibit we'll talk about in a few minutes, but I'll pass them out now.
Move to receive and file.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Motion carries.
I'm going to really focus my conversation on the gas station, the deed restriction, because that seems to be really the only area that we have some difference of opinion with the staff. As she said, I do want to hit a couple highlights. It is a signalized intersection of two major roads, Little Road and Jasmine. It's about a mile south of 52. Although it's not technically conflict zoning, according to the county's definition, clearly res 1 and PO2 are not consistent zoning in plan categories. You can't do the same things in those plan categories, those two districts. Little Road is an arterial with six lanes. Jasmine Boulevard is an east-west collector, and it runs all the way from 19 on the west to Hilltop Drive on the east. The plan amendment site was previously developed with three houses, all of which the property owner demolished. They were unfortunately being used by a homeless camp, and the property owner has also started clearing out the site, although that's gotten a little slowed down due to the storms. But now that these improvements have been made with the houses down and the debris starting to get cleared out, the homeless have now dispersed off of the property, and hopefully that will remain. I would suggest to you that commercial development at the intersection of major streets is a major, is a very typical development pattern in Pasco County. And I have an exhibit to kind of walk you through that. My corridor that I looked at was a little smaller in geography than the county's discussion. Mine went from about a two-mile corridor from State Road 52 on the north to Ridge Road on the south. And in this section of Little Road, commercial zoning and commercial development occurs at every major road intersection. Some are not all four corners, some are some corners, but every single intersection. The first page of the handout shows that, and again, I apologize with no electricity, you're getting the old school instead of a PowerPoint today, but I think it conveys the information. The red stars are where you have commercial development at the major intersections. There are six major intersections. If you turn to the second page, starting at the north at State Road 52, you can see all of the commercial development. And on the southeast quadrant of that intersection, residential development immediately adjacent to commercial. You go to the next page, the first intersection is Jasmine. That's, of course, where the plan amendment's located, and we have existing Walgreens at the northwest corner with C1 zoning. Going to the next intersection of Grove in the southeast quadrant, the VA complex there is adjacent to residential. I believe that's the same site you just discussed having the adult daycare on your agenda today. Fox Hollow Drive is probably a really good example, very comparable to Jasmine Boulevard. That intersection has two corners developed with commercial uses and zoning that are immediately adjacent to single. adjacent to single-family homes. The southwest corner is occupied by Circle K Gas Station, immediately adjacent to single-family homes, and the road along the south there, Fox Hollow Drive, runs, runs alongside of the gas station. It continues west into the residential neighborhood, very similar as you would have at the Jasmine Avenue, Jasmine Boulevard location. The northwest corner is also adjacent to residential, it's Zone C2, but it's currently vacant. You go to page four, the next intersection is Embassy Boulevard or Hilltop Drive. This intersection has three corners with commercial uses adjacent to residential. The northeast corner is occupied by 7-Eleven, next to single-family, and again, Hilltop Drive runs along the south side of those commercial, continues east into the residential neighborhood. Same situation at the southeast corner, just occupied by Walgreens, adjacent to single-family zoning, and also continue, also located on Hilltop Drive. The third corner, the northwest corner, is occupied by mobile gas station and an eye care center, again, adjacent to single-family development. Embassy Boulevard on this case continues past that commercial and into the residential neighborhood, similar to the plan amendment site that we're talking about today. And the fifth page, Ridge Road, and that shows you all the commercial development activity at Ridge, at Ridge Road. So, this is all to summarize that all of the intersections of, of major roads with Little Road in this two-mile corridor have commercial zoning and are developed with commercial uses. Additionally, these commercial uses and gas stations are immediately adjacent to residential uses at five intersections that we've talked about. Excuse me, the commercial uses are immediately adjacent to residential at five intersections. Of those five, two of those intersections are developed with gas stations. So, I did misspeak.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
So, in my experience, gas stations are a little more intensive at access management use than a contractor's office. So, would your access be off of Little Road or Jasmine? That's the first question.
Or both.
Or both. And then, the follow-up question is, can you gain access to either one or both of those roads and still comply with our access spacing requirements?
To answer the first, well, to answer generally, we have not done a site plan to determine, and we haven't sent that to the county, so we don't know what access will be approved. We hope to have access, one access point on each road. I did measure the Jasmine one, I think it's tight, but I think it probably could survive, you know, probably could meet the requirements there to have one driveway on Jasmine and one driveway on, on Little. That's obviously why gas stations like to be at a corner, because they want to have access to get in and out easily and conveniently, as do other commercial uses. That's not the only commercial business that likes to be located at a corner. I will say too, there is absolutely no reason for anyone who stops at the gas station to continue east on Jasmine unless they live in that neighborhood. There's no commercial down there. It does connect to Hilltop, and Hilltop does continue north and south, but if you were going to go north or south, you're gonna go back to the light and turn north or south on Little Road.
Osceola?
Excuse me?
Or to Osceola?
You could go to, to Osceola. Hmm.
Yes.
Perhaps.
Well, I do.
But I, what I'm saying is, I think that most travelers, unless they live in the neighborhood, are not gonna turn east and go into the neighborhood.
So, I guess I'd like our transportation staff to comment on that. I mean, is, since that's the use apparently an issue, I'd like to know whether that use can work from an access management standpoint.
And I guess the point we're trying...
Don't need, not need any very, you know, I'm only pointing out because the contractor's office likely could be just fine with a single access point, very low trip generator, you know, it's probably three trips a day in a contractor's office. A gas station has far more than that. So, I guess I need to know from our transportation staff whether that's going to cause issues from a access management spacing standpoint. Is somebody that can answer that?
Is Essen still on? No.
No, he's, he's not on any longer. We do have one person with transportation. Is there anyone who can speak to access management at the, at this location on the northeast corner of Little Road and Jasmine Boulevard?
What's the depth of this parcel on Jasmine?
Um, just a second, I can tell you.
So, in the code, we have isolated corner parcel clearances. I have to...
On Jasmine, it's about 250 feet along Jasmine, and along Little Road, it's about 462 feet. Should I continue, or do we want, waiting for someone?
Well, do we have anybody?
Doesn't sound like anybody's there that wants to address this.
We're waiting for someone to jump back on to the meeting.
Do you want to come back to that?
Maybe.
Yeah.
And then additionally, just to let you know, we do have two people who have signed up to speak on this matter.
Okay.
Yeah, I, you can let the applicant finish their presentation. I just need staff to answer the question at some point.
We'll come back to the transportation.
Yeah, and I, I want to address this contractor's office. My client never, that was really never an issue, a use that he was considering, so I don't know why that is a problem. We've already agreed to have that one to be one of the prohibited uses, so that's really, you know, it's not, not an issue. I think there was someone else looking at the property before my client purchased it, maybe that was the use they were intending, but...
Is, well, is, is a gas station allowed in C1, or no?
A gas station is not a permitted use in C1. It is a special exception.
So, the gas station was the use that you were trying to get here?
There's a, my client is a developer. He's not the end user. At the time that we agreed to, to, to put gas station on with the other 16 prohibited uses that we've already agreed to, it was frankly to move the agenda along. We couldn't get the case on a public hearing. And number two, he hadn't gotten any interest yet from gas stations, so we thought, "Well, let's see if we can get the case moved along. We'll see what happens." Just in the last three weeks, a little bit before the storms started happening, there has been interest in gas, there's been interest in other retail users, there's been interest by other restaurants, sit-down, you know, things like a Panera, you know, a sit-down restaurant.
Most of those are C1 uses. So, the, the only C2 use that you're seeking, potentially wanting, is gas station?
Well, I'm not sure if the, if a bank drive-through is allowed, the drive-through portion, I'm not sure.
Allowed, yes. That's allowed.
The drive-through restaurant?
Yes, it's also allowed, yes.
Well, that's something we can certainly look at as a C1 versus a C2. We have, we're not here today on a zoning, obviously. We're here today on a plan amendment.
But what I'm hearing, staff say is the gas station is not allowed. So, it's still back to the gas station issue, is what we're talking about.
Well, the reason, no, what we're talking about today is a plan amendment. Y'all are trying to make a decision on a plan amendment. The staff is saying they're only gonna recommend approval if we agree to prohibit a gas station. We don't have an end user yet, so we don't, we feel very uncomfortable limiting that use when we don't know for sure. That may be the, the use that does take the site with maybe another small restaurant user, we don't know. But at this point, for us to say no to a gas station, though we will agree to prohibit it, does seem to be a problem, you know, for my client to do that. So, that's why we're here.
Well, I'm only pointing out that if staff, they didn't have to go this route, they could have just said, "We're only recommending approval of C1."
But what we're not talking about is zoning today. We're talking about...
I understand that, I understand that, but it just sort of got to us a little backwards. I mean, because you've made it very clear you want C2, and staff doesn't, that's why we have this list of prohibited uses in this agenda memo is because, because there was an assumption you were gonna apply for C2. If...
That's true.
If there's an assumption you're gonna apply for C1, I don't even know if there's an issue. I mean, because it sounds like nobody's, well, we haven't heard from the public yet, but...
Well, we can cross that bridge when we get to it.
Yeah.
I have another question.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get to you.
The demolition on this site was done a couple of months ago?
Sounds about right.
When are we getting rid of the foundations?
Hopefully this week.
I mean, they've been sitting out there for a couple of months now.
Correct. The initial...
Sorry, we just, you gotta come up to the podium if you're gonna speak.
Have you been sworn, sir? Good afternoon. My name is Doug Casti. I'm the owner of the lot. I have been sworn in. My address is 6313 Wild Orchid Drive, Lithia, Florida, 33547.
Okay.
Okay. What was your question again, sir?
It was about the foundations.
About the foundations. They've been sitting out there on, I mean, we, I saw the buildings go down, and the sites got debris all over the place, the foundations, the building, concrete debris all over the place. It looks like a mess.
Yes, sir. It is. It was supposed to be cleaned up before the storms. Our original contractor who was doing the demo work went to jail with a lot of my money, and so, we've been scrambling to get somebody. We have somebody under contract, the same person that's actually been clearing the lot. If you're familiar with the lot, it was quite blighted, it was quite overgrown. We've cleared out that part. You're, you're absolutely correct that there are still construction materials there. I'm hoping by the end of this weekend, all that will be cleared up.
I will say on that issue that the county's having difficulty getting...
I understand that, but we're, we're in a state of emerg, this happened a couple of months ago. This has been sitting there like that.
But that's a reasonable explanation.
I'm just saying that if he thinks this is gonna get done in the next week, I'm not sure that's an accurate assumption.
Well, I tend to agree with you. I understand the situation.
And then also, if, if I could just mention, so C2, one of the reasons that we wanted C2 was for grocery stores. This lot fits the buy box for niche, upper-scale type grocery stores like Aldi. We tried Trader Joe's, they weren't interested, but that was one of the primary reasons we wanted C2 as well, so we could shop it around to those smaller grocery stores.
Denise, is that allowed in C1?
Yes, yes, that's allowed in C1.
And how far is it up to, from here to 52?
About a mile.
Do you think Aldi would go with a mile separation?
No, I was just saying it fit the buy box, and so, we sometimes use that as a...
Or something like Aldi.
If, if an Aldi will fit in there, you know, sometimes we can get someone else.
Denise, is a convenience store without gas allowed in C1?
Yes.
Yes.
So, it's the gas pumps that converted to C2?
That's, that's correct, or special exception in C1. It would be a special exception in C1, and by virtue of it being a special exception in C1, it's a permitted use in C2.
And I'm wondering if this is all solved by just rezoning it to C1, and then if he decides, if a gas station comes along, then we can decide that by a special exception.
I agree.
I, I think we, we hear you. We definitely will consider that, and we're not, like I said, we're not to the point yet of doing the rezoning, but that's why we're here in our very first step. We didn't run the rezoning and the plan amendment together. We're here trying to do this part first. We didn't really, honestly didn't think there would be such a huge objection to gas station. We didn't understand it.
Well, but it's not what I'm hearing.
There's been a historic objection to commercial development on that side of Little Road for the past 30 years.
Well, I'm sorry, I didn't know that history, Mr. Moody. I apologize.
Well, okay.
I mean, this, this parcel has been on the market for many, many years. In fact, I've had several clients that were interested in this parcel and were chased away from any commercial land use or zoning. So, I, I mean, I'm really quite surprised that this is even here, period. But we haven't gotten there yet.
Well, in, I'm just trying to narrow down what the request is, because I understand it's a plan stage, okay? But we have an agenda memo in front of us that has all these lists of prohibited C2 uses, which kind of implies that you're seeking C2, okay? Otherwise, that wouldn't be in there. So, if, I'm not saying that even C, I don't know whether even C1's appropriate. I just want to make sure that when the public gets up here and the planning commission's considering this, I understand it's a plan amendment stage, but I think everybody's gonna want to know, what is the ultimate request going to be on the zoning side? Is it gonna be C1, which is a very different list of uses than C2? And so, what I'm hearing Denise say is that even if it was C1, you could, and you say a gas station, I'm not saying it should, would be approved, but it's a sep, you could do a separate request for that as a special exception.
I understand.
Everything else that you've said, so you don't want to do contractor's office?
Right.
The grocery store I'm hearing is allowed in C1, restaurants are allowed in C1. I don't know what else was on your...
We were a little unclear about the grocery store.
Based on the staff memo, I'd probably be pretty scared, because it says the existing employment generating potential for this project would be increased from a .5 floor area ratio, which I'm not sure that's true in Res One, to a 3.0 FAR.
Clearly, no, nobody ever builds to that kind of an FAR, so...
Well, yeah, but that's the justification we're giving to approve it. We're given, we're suggesting...
I don't think they could get that with, still meet C1 standards.
Well, I'm not thinking that either, but if I was a member of the public, I'd be a little nervous.
Would it be appropriate if I finished my presentation that I'm happy to answer any more questions you all have, and then, of course, I'd like to reserve some time for rebuttal, if you don't mind, because I...
Sure.
We obviously have some folks who...
That's good.
I hear you about the C1 versus C2. Think we were a little, just to summarize, we were a little unclear about some of the C2, some of the uses that my client desired. We didn't think were allowed in C1. We're hearing that now that most of those are, except for gas, so we will take that back. We'll take it under consideration. I can't, I don't think we're gonna make a decision for you today, but we, we hear you, we hear your concerns. I just want to say again, the staff has agreed that commercial is right along Little Road. They said that the Cal land use designation, this is a quote from the staff report, is appropriate at this location pursuant to the various policies, Flu 1.6.2, and it meets the location criteria, meaning it's at the intersection of two major roads, Little and Jasmine. We have already agreed to, honestly, to get to the deed restriction part, we really thought the deed restriction discussion should appropriately happen at the rezoning stage. I've done other rezonings that did have deed restrictions. I'm fully aware how that works and how it's been requested and how it works through the process. So, I was a little surprised that it was a conversation at this point. But regardless, we have already agreed to 16 prohibited uses off of the, to include in the deed restrictions, including the live local, because we do not intend to do residential on the property. The only one that's left now that we, we're talking about is, is gas. We merely ask to be treated the same as other intersections of commercial properties along Little Road, and we think that we would respectfully request a recommendation of approval of the plan amendment without this discussion about the gas station, and reserve that conversation to the rezoning and the deed restriction stage. Will you all will see it again, and we'll make that decision in a notice public hearing. I do thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today, and I'll be happy to answer any questions, and of course, would like a few minutes at the end for any rebuttal as necessary.
Okay. Thank you. Is somebody from transportation on?
Yes, we have them available.
To answer the transportation question? Who's there? Stacy, are you, are you there?
Hey, good afternoon. This is Essen. Mr. Girardi, what was the question?
Oh, I can restate it.
Yeah, David will restate the question.
So, the discussion, Essen, is that we're evaluating whether a gas station is appropriate at the northeast corner of Jasmine and Little Road. The site is shown on our graphic. I don't know if you can see it. My question was, can, can they get access to Little Road and/or Jasmine and still meet our spacing requirements from an access management standpoint?
So, spacing requirement, I believe on Little Road would be, I'll have to check the table, but for an, it's an arterial road, which I believe will be 440 unless the speed is above 45 miles per hour. Jasmine would also be at 440, if I'm not mistaken. I can pull up the table, but for, for a gas station use, and this is purely my opinion, if you look at the westbound approach, northbound, you see that there is a merge lane that's there on Little Road, and the geometry for the westbound right turn lane to go northbound is separated at that intersection there. I believe there, the intersection approach design will have to be amended to address a connection to Jasmine. End the right turn lane, et cetera, or if the access is off of Little Road, even if we think about a variation of an alternative standard, that whole merge lane issue has to be addressed. That would be, I think, problematic, because people who are merging to go northbound are clearing their left side, and they're not looking at what traffic may, may or may not be coming out of a potential gas station site, like with there. It can create a major conflict point. But I, in my opinion, that westbound approach to northbound, that, that intersection design, it has to be modified in order to accommodate a, a gas station at that location. Gas stations do draw 70%, about 60, 70% is all passerby traffic, so a lot of right-in, right-out movements happen at gas stations. That's why I'm saying it may be creating a lot of safety conflicts at this, both the locations. I think if one was to be closer to two, it would probably make sense to have it at the lesser of curve. the lesser of functionally classified roadway, which is Jasmine, it's a collector. Little is an arterial. I don't know if Stacy is online, if she's got the table pulled up, but I can, if you just give me one second, and I'll tell you what the spacing standard is.
Yes, I have the table up. So for Little Road, or I'm sorry, for Jasmine, at 30 miles per hour, it's a collector. So it's going to be the 245. For Little Road, which is going to be at a speed of 45 miles per hour, and it is an arterial roadway, so that one, sorry.
That would be 440 feet.
Yes, correct.
And so, does anybody know the depth, I mean, the width of the site on?
Yes, so Little, excuse me, Jasmine Boulevard is 253 feet in length along Jasmine. The site is 253 feet, three feet along Jasmine. So at 245, it'd be tight, would be at the far eastern end. And Little Road is approximately 460 feet running north and south along the property line. So again, the driveway at that 440 feet would be at the very northern end of the driveway. There is a, there is an XL lane northbound on Little today. So obviously, that would be reviewed, whether it's long enough as part of the site plan review process.
But if you go to 9013J, this is an isolated corner property which doesn't meet the minimum spacing standards, so there's an alternative for these with smaller spacing standards.
I don't know if, yeah, I don't know if isolated corner applies when you've got two access points, but maybe. So if they, I think if they have access to off of Little, they're not considered an isolated corner.
Okay.
If it is at the northern end of the property, it's at the very end of that XL lane there. So it seems like it'd be plausible that could be addressed.
All right, well, I guess, you answered my question, which is spacing standards don't necessarily prohibit a gas station here, there's a potential way that it could work, so that answers my question.
Okay.
Just to be clear, if I'm understanding them correctly, these spacing standards would apply to any commercial development, not just a gas station. Right, those, so we're talking about whatever.
That's a true statement, but, but my point is that a gas station, as Mr. Khalil said, is a very intense use from an access man, it generates a lot of driveway trips.
Yes.
So that was why I asked the question.
Good, okay, anything else for Cindy? I think there are a couple of people here from the public that want to speak, and then Cindy will have you back up for rebuttal.
Mr. Chair, the first person that signed up to speak is Joni Wilson.
Good afternoon, my name is Joni Wilson, I live a couple doors down at 9105 Jasmine Boulevard. I appreciate the time to speak, and I was sworn in. I just wanted to go over a couple of points. My big issue is the gas station or any high-traffic business in the area. Jasmine Boulevard and Little Road have a ton of accidents for such a small resident. I mean, I know you guys consider it a major roadway for Jasmine, but it's residential, there's not businesses on that road. Just a Google search, I found 10 gas stations within 2.5 miles of that site, the closest being less than a mile away. I think, I know you guys are locals, so Griffin Park is not far away. That is a high drug use area, drug sales, we get transients. I'm glad the buildings are down, even if they are rubble, I'm thankful for that. But even with those buildings there, we had people in the lot across the street setting fires. The fire department was out recently. I feel like it could bring more crime to the area, it's just a nuisance area drawing attention to a gas station. And it's walking distance from that, there's plenty of other gas stations around that you can get to easily. Environmentally, a lot of the residents immediately around that area have pets, agricultural kind of land. The immediate neighbor there has a bunch of dogs, I think they have chickens. I talked to at least four other neighbors who couldn't be here, who are all very concerned about having a high-traffic business at that intersection. I know personally, I am not opposed to a commercial business being there. It's Little Road, I mean, it's only practical for it to be commercial use. But I just see, like, I know they talked about not having resident, or you know, people other than residents using Jasmine Boulevard, but we do have people other than residents cutting through there. Osceola, Miniola, Bass Lake, Hilltop, people cut through those areas. Hilltop had even tried having speed bumps installed, which I hate speed bumps, but I get why they wanted that, because we have kids out there in the dark in the morning for bus stops. I noticed that, I just feel like with so many gas stations in the area, there's not really a need. I saw recently that 7-Eleven's closing 3% of their gas stations due to decreased sales. We're pushing all the electric vehicles, so I feel like there's going to be less and less need for that, and it's going to draw the wrong types of people to that area. Right next door, or I guess one property over, is a charter school. That is, I know, I think, elementary and middle school. They also have a car line that operates, you know, twice a day, that I think they extended the turn lane to accommodate their car line. So it just brings more traffic to that corner, that intersection. A lot of people are doing U-turns now to get to the school in the mornings and in the afternoons. Is that my timer?
Yeah, that's your timer, you just go ahead and wrap it up, it's fine.
So I mean, I just, I know a lot of the residents feel the same way, and I totally condone other uses, even like a sit-down restaurant, but anything high-traffic like that is only going to cause more car accidents and probably the, especially a 24-hour business, the wrong kind of people to be loitering in the area.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, the next person is Alan Rose.
Good afternoon, my name's Alan Rose, 10221 Hilltop Drive, Newport, Ritchie, Florida, 34654. Yes, I have been sworn in. And I have been communicating with zoning and with, with all of the objections and the restrictions that apply to this parcel. It's, Brian Yunker has had all these, so you should have all of these objections. What it is, is this property is part of Golden Acres, Unit 1. And it was, I don't know when the last zoning change happened, but this zoning change, I'm here and I'm objecting to it. It is, we have a number of things impaired waters. It, it's drainage square from this property will affect Bear Creek. Bear Creek overflows at every heavy rain down at Osceola, where Bear Creek goes under, you see that flooding, especially during these last hurricanes, you saw it again. It is also, certain mineral restrictions on these. There's not supposed to be any commercial building on this type of restrictions, and that's what this restricted water is basing. That's one. From where this property is, eastbound to Hilltop, where I live, all those homes there, $400,000 to $1 million. Do you think we want, and I just, I just rebuilt my home. My taxes went from $1,500 to over $6,000. And now, you're going to bring in a commercial development in my property, I'm going to lose money, I'm going to have a serious devaluation of my property if you put a commercial property up there like a gas station. I'm talking to the neighborhood, I would see $200,000 off what I would expect. My neighbor's going to put his property up for over $700,000. He can expect the same thing to happen to him. This type of, within Golden Acres, and this is part of Golden Acres, and it does not have access to Little Road at this time. It only has access on Jasmine. And yes, it will definitely impede that turning lane. There's so much, so much, you should have it all. I submitted pictures to show on Jasmine, if you go, there's, there's pictures.
You got, you got time, you got another minute.
But there's pictures of all this, if you look up Jasmine from this lot, you see nothing but oak trees. People think it's just a beautiful, nice tree-lined community. Well, behind all of those oak trees, what people don't see are estates, residential estates. And there are beautiful home sites, a lot of, most of them are going to be equestrian, and most of them are going to be resident, they're all residential. And it's a beautiful neighborhood, that's why I moved there, that's why I invested in my property. You put something like this, and I'm going to, I'm going to start really raising K because my taxes, I'm going to give you, hey, instead of $6,000, now let's bring it back down to $2,000. And I assure you, I will raise K, this should not happen in our neighborhood. That's Golden Acres, Unit 1, thank you.
Thank you. Denise, is there anybody else signed up?
That's the last person I had signed up to speak, if you want to check, to see if there's anybody else.
Is there anybody else here to speak on this item? And there's nobody on WebEx.
There's no one on WebEx.
Very good. Cindy, do you want to come back up?
Love to come back.
I'll be very brief, because I think we've been talking about this quite a lot. First of all, we're asking for the comprehensive plan category, we're asking to do commercial. We will, we have heard you about what you've heard, we've heard the neighbors about their concerns about a gas station. We will look seriously at that and, and try to come back with something that we think you would be in agreement with. With regard to the capacity on Little Road, which I know we talked a lot about access driveways, there are currently driveways on the site that serve residential. We will work something out with the county staff if we are allowed to move forward through the rezoning and the site plan process. We will work out whatever the county requires with regard to the access points. But with regard to, to the volume on Little Road, I just wanted to point out that this county did the transportation needs assessment for this plan amendment, we didn't do it, we actually asked the county to do it. And they found that there was capacity on Little Road till the year 2045, with, including this site as a commercial site. So I don't think the Little Road capacity is an issue. I do understand that where the driveways go and how they affect the, the particular use and the access to the property and safe access, I understand that totally. But we can't get to that point unless you agree that commercial is the right place. The staff has said commercial is the right at this corner. I've showed you an exhibit of six other intersections along Little that all have commercial. We're asking to be treated the same way and allow us to move forward with the plan amendment, come back with the rezoning, with the appropriate deed restrictions, with hopefully, hopefully the C1 zoning district, and then go through the site plan process. I thank you very much for your time, and again, I'm happy to answer any further questions.
I'll just make a comment, yeah, just general comments, not a question. So I, I live on Lakeview, I drive through here every, you know, every day, pretty much. I, I think the, you know, we're talking about a plan amendment today. I think we can get into the details of all of the, what type of commercial use would be good when it comes to the zoning portion of it, which is what kind of confused me, why there were so many of these deed restrictions that were on here at this, at this stage. But I think commercial makes sense on that corner. And I'm, like I said, I live in that neighborhood. We know that residential probably doesn't make sense on a six-lane highway on that. And so, matter of fact, the young lady testified up here just a second ago, she'd be the one probably most affected, being two doors down from that, and I don't think we heard from the homeowner that was actually right next door, but, you know. So there were, if they had concerns, obviously, that could be addressed at that point with buffering and things like that. But I think commercial at this stage makes sense. And I say that as a resident of that neighborhood on Lakeview.
So, question for staff. Right now, the property's PO2 with a Res 1 Flu. That's, in theory, a conflict zoning, can they develop under the PO2 standard today?
Mr. Chairman, the, the Charis Pito's Plan Development Economic Growth, the PO2 zoning classification is consistent with the Res 1 future land use classification per policy Flu 165.
Okay.
Yeah, so they're, they're entitled to the full range of PO2 uses.
The, all right, so the, Derek, not, I get you. I don't think the site is suitable for residential development. There was a time when this was Plaza Drive, when Golden Acres was first developed, yes, these were residential sites. When the county opted to extend Little Road north to 52 and make it a six-lane road, who'd want to live there? I get that. But there is opportunity for development, this is still zoned PO2. They can have professional offices there, they can have business services, financial services, public and semi-public buildings, post office, police, fire stations, libraries, museums, personal services like beauty and barber shops, tailor shops, laundry shops, shoe repair, dry cleaners, florists, photographic studios, veterinary clinics, there's other things that they, where they can get some commercial use and income from the site without taking it to the C2 level in the future, or the comm classification of, of commercial development. And although I hear the applicants say they want to be treated the same, I'm looking at the map, and I'm looking at Jasmine, and I'm looking at Grove, and the vast majority of the, these are PO zonings. So they do fit with the rest of what's going on there. And even though at Fox Hollow, there is some C2 on the west side of Little Road, I would tell you that the owner of the one at the northwest corner of Fox Hollow and Little Road has been trying to develop that for 25 years that I know of, and the problem is the site's so small, it's, there's nothing you can fit on that C1 use, and the Circle K that's on the southwest corner is so small, it's basically dysfunctional. I don't know if you ever tried to get in and out of that place, but it's not a great gas station site.
You have.
The people in, the people that live in Golden Acres live in an estate residential zoning district. All right, they do have nice homes, they have nice properties. It's not unusual to see someone riding a horse. It's not an appropriate location for gas stations and high-intensity commercial uses. The office uses, and that's what you've seen, I think there's, like she said, you mentioned an eye care place, I know that's been there forever and a day. Those things all seem, there's been insurance up and down there. Those things are kind of fine, they're fairly low-traffic generators, but high, high-traffic generators? I'm just not sure that's the right place, but I agree, it's not a residential site, that makes no sense. Unfortunately, the site's not big enough to be an MPUD. And I'd almost wish it could come back as an MPUD, because my bigger concern is for the lot that's immediately to the east of this parcel. So if he were to get a C1 or a C2 zoning, he's going to end up with a 30-foot setback for a building adjacent to residential, agree?
Agreed.
But that doesn't mean he won't have a parking lot right up to his rear property line minus the landscape buffer, right? So if this guy were to get an Aldi here or some other competing grocery store, he could potentially have a loading bay next to his house, a parking lot, all the boxes and the generators that go behind grocery stores. So I'm not sure that's the right location for that.
So I just wanted to make one more comment. It's obvious if the planning commission, about what we do with the request, but in the agenda memo, in the planning discussion number two, it talks about some access points. It says there's an access to Little Road from 3, it's 395 feet from Little Road, and there's three accesses to the site from Jasmine.
Those were for houses that got torn down.
Well, we just heard testimony from Essen that those would not comply with our land development code, so.
Right.
I do not think you should be putting in your agenda memo access points that would, that would be inconsistent with our land development code. So either strike it or say that those access points would have to be removed if it's converted to a commercial use or something. But you can't just leave a statement as if those access points would be appropriate, that this is a commercial use. I'm not even sure they'd be appropriate if it's for an office use.
Okay. Pretty close together there on the south side, another problem.
I don't think, pretty much guarantee you that Essen would not allow three curb cuts on Jasmine.
Okay. Anything else from up here?
And my only other comment is if, if, I don't know what planning commission's going to do on the commercial request, but if, if you are uncomfortable with C2, you probably would need to direct staff to remove all that language about the deed restriction with the C2 uses, because if that's going to be deferred issue, it should, there should not be any language in the agenda memo that implies that it's going to be C2, if you're going to defer that issue.
Yeah, that's kind of where I'm at. Yeah, that's kind of where I'm at.
But, 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 it's what you, you all need to decide what you want to do with the request to COM, because that's the real issue before you.
I'm just not comfortable with the COM, and I see that the property can still be developed with some lower intensity commercial development as it is today, so it, which doesn't necessarily need to be residential, so they can still do offices and that kind of thing.
Anybody else? Yeah, I'm with John, I'm not comfortable with the COM land use in proximity of the state residential there. So, is there a motion anybody wants to make?
I've made enough motions today.
Then I'll be the bad guy, I'll make the motion to recommend denial of the proposed comprehensive plan amendment.
Motion on the floor is our second.
I guess the motion fails.
This motion fails, is there another motion?
Just to be clear, the chair, you can second the motion.
I can second.
You can if you want to, it's up to you. I'm only saying that because you just stated your position. If you didn't second the motion, I'm assuming you would have wanted to.
Let me take that back, I will second the motion.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
It's fine. Roll call.
Yeah, just to be clear, an aye means you're supporting denial.
Denial, correct, that's right.
Christopher Cool?
Nay.
Aye.
Matt Wood?
Nay.
Derek Pappas?
Nay.
Chris Williams?
Nay.
Jamie, Vice Chairman Jamie Drew?
Aye.
Okay, probably need a new motion.
All right, so new motion on the floor.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the COM plan amendment to COM, but I, so, let me pause myself for a second there. So what you were discussing, David, about all of the language regarding the C2 stuff, right, so all the deed restrictions regarding C2, because I, I still don't understand why that's in this application, because this is just a COM plan amendment.
I don't think it needs to be in this application. I, my concern with leaving it in is that it presumes that C2 is an acceptable use if all of these uses were removed, and I have heard conclusive evidence today that C2 is the appropriate zoning for this site. It may be C1, and even the applicant said they may apply for C1, so.
That's kind of where I said, I feel like, see, you know, if this was approved, C1 would be more appropriate than C2, so, you know, so can we strike that language altogether?
I think you can make a recommendation that any language references to C2 be struck from the agenda memo as part of your motion. But I would also ask you that you also add to your motion that the language related to the existing access points on Little Road and Jasmine also be struck from the memo as well, if you're going to make a motion to strike stuff.
Okay, so that's, that's a motion I'll make, is to approve with striking references, as David stated, references to the C2 zoning as well as references to the access points.
Okay. Agree completely with that, I think it's, you know, this is not the appropriate time to kind of debate this, this issue, it's a zoning, so I agree with the COM.
Okay, is the motion in a second? Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay.
You got it?
You got it. Motion carries.
The reverse of the last.
Okay. Denise, I think that's it, correct?
That was it, but I need a clarification. David, on this one, does Chris vote on this?
I was going to ask that question, but it wouldn't have changed the result.
No, I understand, but it does kind of change, it does change the count.
He actually did not, so if he did, I didn't hear whether he did or didn't.
I did, because I always look at it, because it does change density.
Yeah, but you're supposed to vote if it's increasing residential density.
Okay, gotcha.
This is decreasing. And the fact it has a live local restriction means there's no way that it could increase residential density.
Gotcha, understood, okay, my bad.
I think in that scenario, not blaming you, but.
Sure.
But it doesn't affect the result of the vote anyways, so.
Right.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else from up here? Motion to adjourn?
To adjourn, so move.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.